Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Combined Committee, the whole and official voting village board meeting. I'd like to begin by asking our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zeminek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss?
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Village Planner and Assistant Economic Development Director Malik?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunter?
Here.
Thank you. Please try and ask some of the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item before us this evening are the minutes of the combined committee, the whole meeting and board meeting held July 18, 2011. Any questions?
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Thank you. Open forum. We have no requests before us this evening under open forum. Moving right along, reports. Mayor, we had intended to have Commonwealth Edison here this evening to answer any questions that we had, or perhaps some of the citizens' residents of Westmont had, business people, but they declined because of another storm that hit the area, so they could not be ready for coming before the board. But we are going to continue to work to get them to come to a meeting, to answer any questions that any of us have, and we are not the only ones. All the other villages faced in the area faced the same power outages that we did. However, we want to make sure that they're aware of the specific outage and problems that affected Westmont and how they're going to rectify that in the future. Next, I would like to just congratulate the Westmont Special Events Group for a very successful picnic, which they had last Friday evening at Ty Warner Park. And that was a thank you picnic for all of the volunteers, for the taste of Westmont and volunteers that come out for all of our village activities throughout the year. It was very hot that day, but around 6:30, the temperature dropped and it was a beautiful evening. So there was lots of food and everyone had a good time. Uncle Bubbs always provides a good feed for everyone when they cater that restaurant. And the last thing I'd like to mention is I wish a speedy recovery to Larry McIntyre, who was hospitalized yesterday, and he is the brains of the operation of the Westmont Special Events Corporation, and we want to wish him a speedy recovery. Thank you. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just have one item I wanted to share with the board. When I was down, it's on, where was I?
Southern Illinois, way south.
Way south. Oh, Fallon. They had on Thursday, some, one of the IML lobbyists came in and talked to us, and he was talking about what a yeoman great job Senator Dillard did fighting for the municipalities. And I just think he's our ref and he did a great job for us, and I think we all owe him a great deal of gratitude because he fought hard for the municipalities. And the other thing, I just wanted to congratulate Nancy Martins was sworn in yesterday as president of the Westmont Rotary Club. So she'll serve as president this year and she'll do a fine job, I'm sure. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zeminek.
Thank you. I've got nothing to report tonight.
Village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, kind of following the comments regarding Commonwealth Edison. I wanted to report to the board that a week ago, we had a meeting of the District Three mayors and managers. It's a meeting that occurs on a quarterly basis, and the main topic of discussion for that particular meeting was Commonwealth Edison and the extreme frustration that many of the municipalities in this area are feeling with the recent storms that we've had and the outages that we've sustained. The conclusion of that meeting was that we're going to continue to work on this issue. I think the consensus of the meeting was that we're going to try to do most of that work through DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, but there certainly wasn't any indication that we wouldn't try other avenues to try to continue to encourage Commonwealth Edison to improve the infrastructure. Within the last year or so, we've heard a little bit different information from Commonwealth Edison where they're finally acknowledging that some of the infrastructure that they have, both in the ground and in the air, is aging and they haven't been able to keep up with trying to replace it. So I just wanted to report that to the board. It's certainly on the minds of all of our neighboring communities and will continue to work. And we will have someone from Commonwealth Edison here eventually to talk about, at least if, for no other reason, explain some of the reasons as to what happened and why it happened. And then the other thing I had was I wanted to ask Chief Mulhern to come to the podium. He's got a report regarding the interoperable radio system project that the board approved a few months ago.
Thank you, Mayor Searle. We took custody this week, I shouldn't say custody, that's a, we loaned a model, a working model of the actual 700 Starcom radio, and I wanted to bring it to the board, show it around and the board tonight. We've talked a lot about it. We're getting close. These are in stock in the county. They are currently programming them for us. So yes, there's a lot of talk about it. They do exist. This is the radio that approximately cost, this chief, I would say, $6,000 radio. It has a computer. It's all computerized. We have it right now to get our frequencies, or called talk groups, together and figure out how we want the talk group set up and to get used to it. They're talking now. We have a meeting this Thursday. You'll probably get a better update, but we're hearing now that it probably will go live for our area sometime in 2012. Before the summer of 2012, we're hoping in late winter or early spring of 2012, we'll get this. This will solve a lot of our communication problems. With this radio, you could conceivably talk to any squad car, fire truck in DuPage County based on these channels and being able to go through all these. That's why it's interoperable. The antenna looks awfully long, and for me, it looks even longer. I mean, if you put this on, it'd be even worse, but we're understanding it'll probably be a half, an inch and a half shorter than what it is right now. And also, there'll be a microphone up on the officer's shoulders, which may alleviate having had this antenna on there, but we're not 100% sure yet. So I just wanted to give you an update. It is working closer. Addison was supposed to have gone live this month, but it appears now they're pushed back into late 2011. They're going to be the beta test site, and then after that, once they get the bugs and everything gets together, we're working with Donner's Grove on councils. We hopefully soon will be up and running again and sometime in early 2012.
You look like you could alleviate your collapsible baton.
Yes. All sorts of things. At night, if I can illuminate it, I can direct traffic and all sorts of things, but multi-purpose tool. But this is the same one the firefighters will be using, same thing with the equipment. There's all sorts of neat functions, not only for law enforcement, but firefighters. There's noise-canceling microphones that they actually understand, stand next to their cutting saws and be able to talk and even hear the song.
How are they going to work with EMA equipment?
Dave, do you know? This is what's called a dual-band radio. It has both the UHF and the Starcom 700 radio system. So if we chose to go to the EMA frequency, we still could. I don't know about issuing to EMA, you know?
They're not going to stay with their current?
They're going to stay with their current frequency, so we'll be able to communicate with them. One nice thing is there's what's called a Westmont Local, a community group. So if we were to give radios to, we can put anybody on that channel we want, from my understanding. So during a special event, you could, you know, hand them out for EMA. You can hand them out to even the event organizers. It's called the Westmont Local. Only those people that have the radios and are switched to that channel can access it.
David, that will talk with the EMA ones that we have now.
If we give them a radio, but yes, if we program, it's called, we call it Tac Two or Tac One. That's a UHF channel. This is dual-band, it's 700 and UHF. Yes, you can, it takes a little bit, that's why we got this, to practice. Toggle down a couple switch moves and a couple toggling down on a button, and it will be on the EMA channel. So yes, your radios, you could still use your old radios, provided they're what's called narrow-banded, but after that, you know, you can still, if they had, the fire department has these available, these could be as well. We would prefer these because they're digital and better reception.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay. Trustee items. Trustee Scott?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Trustee Fleming?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Seneca?
Thank you. I just want to say that I had the opportunity to golf in the C-SPAR golf outing last week along with Michelle Forsley and her brother, Michael, and it was just a great, great event. It's fundraiser for C-SPAR. It was very well attended and a lot of fun. Very warm, but a lot of fun. Also, Michelle Forsley is just quite the little athlete with C-SPAR. She's on the blue team for softball, and she'll be going downstate for Special Olympics in September, so we're looking forward to that. She also came in first in the golf tournament in Bartlett for C-SPAR on Sunday, so she makes Westmont very, very proud. And then lastly, I just wanted to extend sympathy to the family of Spider Webb, who was a long-term, or longtime employee of our village, who passed away recently. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Just a couple of things. If I could have DC Weiss come. We do have a fire academy. I'd like him to give a brief talk about, and then also the 9/11 ceremony because the time is different. I have that information if you don't.
Thank you. Yes, we are sponsoring a Citizens Fire Academy. It'll be starting on Wednesday night, September 7th, going to Wednesday night, November 9th, 6:00 to 10:00 at Headquarters Station. We are accepting applications at this time, and we do have them at our Headquarters Station and Station Two, if you want to stop to pick one up. The 9/11 service this year, I believe the time is being changed to 1:00.
1:00, because it's a Sunday.
Right, and it is on a Sunday, and it'll be at Station Two again, I believe.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you so very much.
All right.
And my sympathies to the Webb family as well. I knew Spider a little bit, but not as well as I wish I would have, so, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Nero?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. New business, 522 North Park, zoning code variance request. Board to consider ordinances approving requests for the following zoning code variances. A, variance to allow construction of a detached garage over 28 feet in length, and B, variance to allow construction of a garage over 576 square feet in area. Steve?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, sir. Board of Trustees, how are you? I'm Steve Watson. I'm representing Diane Sackel on this project we'll be building the garage for. The property is 60 by 340 foot deep. Even with this garage built on it, we'll be doing roughly 40% lot coverage. That's with the driveway and everything coming into it. The real variance is that variance needed is the fact that garage that's existing is falling down. She's going to build the garage and then do addition to it later on. We're putting the footing on the garage now, meeting all setbacks, so we can do the addition later on. And that's why we need the variance, because it's bigger than what would normally be allowed. That's really about it.
Just for the public that may be here or watching this on television, what will the dimensions of the completed garage?
30 by 24.
30 by 24.
24 deep, 30 wide. It'll be attached with a 12-foot library later on to the existing house behind her bedroom. She likes to read. And she, we're putting a foundation for a fireplace, a brick fireplace, will be included in the library later on. That, she just financially can't do both right now. She wants to do the one. We're building it so we can do the addition later on. Nice and simple. Meeting all the setback requirements that are required for an attachment.
So by going in now, she won't have to come back later for variance?
Right. There will not be anything involved. If we could afford to do the whole project, there would have been no variance, because even with the additional 12 foot there, she would have been at like 16% lot coverage. She's nowhere near lot coverage. Her garage is falling down. She can't park her car in it anymore. So let's combine and make it easy for her. That's all we're asking.
Thanks for the plans that show what the final's going to look like.
I thought that would help.
I absolutely have no problem with this. I'm very familiar with the property and the neighboring homes. I think it's going to be great. It's a beautiful project. I know the family and everything they do is first class, so it will be beautiful.
Looks nice.
Any other questions for board members? Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this proposal before us? With that being said, I would accept there are no further questions. A motion.
So move, Seneca. Second, Emery.
Clarify, that's an item A.
A.
Have a motion and a second?
Uh huh.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Item B.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, 421 Lindley Road, zoning code variance request. Board to consider ordinances approving requests for the following zoning code variances. A, variance to allow lot coverage greater than 35% for the purpose of constructing a service sidewalk. B, variance to allow construction of a service sidewalk with a non-conforming side yard setback. And C, variance to allow improvements to a lot of substandard width.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, board. My name is Dominic DiSerra. I'm here to seek a variance for what has been included in the record this evening. I began work on a service walk along each side of my home as a result of removing very old and destroyed flagstone in conjunction with the zoning board's recommendation and several letters that my neighbors and others in the neighborhoods submitted. I respectfully request your approval.
Questions from board members?
It's nice to see the neighbors submit these and say thumbs up, that, you know, they're familiar with it and they like it.
Yeah.
It's good to see.
I guess my question will come in is how did it get to 46% originally?
May I answer that?
Sure.
We purchased the home and lot coverage was actually 52%. This is a reduction because we removed significant amount of flagstone in the back part of the yard and just maintained two-service walk. So it's, overall, it's a reduction from what we originally purchased the home with.
So at that point, how did it get to 52% originally, then?
What year was it built? What year was it on built?
Do you remember what year it was built?
I think the home was built in 2000, and we purchased it in 2004.
We could find no evidence of a variance having ever been issued for this particular property. It looks like without the sidewalk that was put in, it would be at about 41.8 anyway, but it is a non-conformity that we're not certain how it got into play.
Not sure when the lot coverage requirement was put in place, what year that was. Been after year 2000? It's possible.
Yeah, the 40-year law.
Okay.
Through the cracks.
Any other questions? Comments from board members?
That area has no issues of flooding, does it? That I've heard of.
Our planning engineer looked at it and didn't have any concerns for anything in addition to just filing for the permit, so it doesn't appear to be in a problem area as identified in our recent study.
We have a motion on point, or wait a minute, is there anyone on the public? Let me put on this item. Hearing none. We have a motion on point A.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Point B.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Point C.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Project is approved.
Thank you. I would like to, on the record, say thank you to Shannon and her, whoever assisted her. She's been helpful in guiding me through this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always nice to get positive comments from our staff. Thank you very much, sir. Next item, 30 West End, zoning code variance request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request to allow a new home and front porch and a 35-foot required front yard setback. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Getus Belitis. I am the owner of 30 West End. March 31st of this year, we had a small house fire. It pretty much structurally destroyed the home, and I'm looking to rebuild my house with the same setback that it has currently, which is 28 feet 9 inches. The zoning requires now the house be moved back 35 feet. If I move the house back to the required 35 foot to the front of the porch, I will not have enough lot left behind me for a dry well, or I will have excessive slope to my backyard, which will exacerbate runoff on the back of my lot into my neighbors.
You're going to reconstruct on the same foundation?
No, we are putting a new foundation because the current foundation is too shallow. We have six foot to the beam throughout the basement, and we're looking to replace with a nine-foot basement, where it will be eight foot to the beam.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
I just wanted to repeat, you said you couldn't move it back because it wouldn't give you room for what?
When we move it back, we have a drainage problem. I do not have enough room to put a dry well 10 foot behind my structure, and the slope of my lot is such that when we build the home, we have to cover the foundation to the six inches as required by code. It would have a slope of like 6% or 7%, so the water would not percolate into the ground. It would just run off into my neighbor's yard behind me and to the left or right of me.
If I recall correctly, due to the smaller lot size that this house is on, if the home were set back at the 35-foot setback, that would require a longer driveway and would put the applicant over the lot coverage requirement.
Currently, I'm 34.8, and it would put it just fractionally over 35%.
In addition to that, I'd just like to add that this property was identified as adjacent to a drainage sub-basin area, so the location that the home is proposed is appropriate, kind of in relation to what Attorney Zeminek's comments were, because any further back, it could pose a problem with regard to the detention. Our staff review comments included notations that lot coverage at this point is at 34.8% and no lot coverage variances would be recommended because this is in an area that is tributary.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds reasonable.
Any other questions? The house, building it, where you want to build it, will line up with other houses on either side of you?
Currently, all, most of the homes on the block are at 28 feet 9, 10 inches. There are two exceptions, 12 West End and 16, and they are further forward than what I'm proposing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Anyone from the public on this request? We have a motion, please.
So move, Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Final discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Next item, 405 South Oak, zoning code variance request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request to allow a lot coverage greater than 35% for the purpose of constructing a deck.
That's a patio.
Patio, excuse me.
Good evening, my name is Jim Kraus. I want to hand out the, show the discussion.
I need you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you gave me two.
My name is Jim Kraus, and I own 405 South Oak Avenue, and my reason for being here this evening is to request a variance to build a patio. I know the operative issue is percentage of lot coverage. I'd like to provide some background, which I think is very compelling. What was once probably the worst house in Westmont is probably now one of the finest in the neighborhood. My mother inherited a home from my great uncle, and his son was a collector, which is an understatement. The house looked pretty normal from the curb in the beginning, but once you looked in the backyard, it became very scary. It would make something on hoarders look like child's play. That's the backyard after I removed four vehicles, a camper, and other various trash. I had an idea when I was doing the cleanup to assist my mother, that after I saw the ground, I decided to buy the house. When I did that, I had architect's plans rendered by an architect friend in Rockford, and I submitted those plans. That's the foundation that was approved before construction. The rear of the house I removed, and I went up a story. That's the foundation after it was poured. The front of the house, the interior was completely gutted, the roof was completely raised, all new mechanicals, all new electrical, all new plumbing, all new floors, all new everything. That's what the house looks like today, a year ago. The landscaping has grown in and it looks rather handsome. That's a side view of the garage, and that little area in the back right there is where I'd like to put a patio. The way the plans were designed was to have an egress from the recreation room and the kitchen, and as it is now, I fall three feet coming out of the kitchen. That's the small area right there I'd like to have a patio. And these are the original plans submitted to the Village of Westmont in June 2008 that were approved in August 2008. That also includes the patio. And all the plans which were submitted were approved. This was my last presentation before the zoning commission. Everything was done in good faith. All plans were submitted and approved. All permits were made. Everything was inspected and approved. And if there would have been anything that could have been changed, I would have done that before construction or during the process. And I sincerely believe it's a hardship case. Yes, I am over lot coverage, and at the same time, there have been no neighborhood objections. They support the project and have watched me on television. There was a suggestion made to take out part of the driveway, but I would respectfully request not to do so. Number one, it was very expensive, and to accommodate any water runoff situations, I have drain tile that are on the east and south side of the driveway. What I could do, if there's any runoff issues, of which there are none, my contractor doesn't recommend it, but I could put either a French drain or some type of drain under the patio to ensure that the water went east. At the moment, again, I have no steps from the kitchen or the rec room, and thank you for your time.
Well, you certainly transformed an eyesore that was an eyesore for many years.
Looks beautiful.
I did a yeoman's job of redoing that property.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Took me three years and too much money.
My next question is, would you do it again?
Probably not. Sincerely, it did take me three years. I spent every weekend for two and a half years just to get to the point where I could start construction, just taking the garbage out. I filled up 20 40-yard dumpsters. I filled up two semis of scrap metal and other stuff I don't even want to discuss.
Thank you. Questions from board members?
The original plans had the patio in them, correct?
The original plans, the plans that were approved in 2008 showed a deck, not a patio.
Okay.
Approximately the same size.
Okay, so it was a deck and not a patio?
Correct. Those plans that were approved by permit in 2008, it appeared that lot coverage was 49.6 in those drawings, and the survey that was presented at the third Planning and Zoning Commission hearing that Mr. Kraus had commissioned did show lot coverage at 53% for the as-built conditions. So Steph is in the awkward position of disagreeing with the planning and zoning recommendation because there still appears to be a discrepancy or an increase of 3% lot coverage, which we can only presume occurred in the field with the driveway changes that were noted between the plans that were shown just a moment ago and the aerial imagery and inspections. All of that being said, of course, we're very thankful for all of the work that's been done to clean up a very onerous code enforcement violation within this neighborhood, and do certainly appreciate that the neighbors have indicated their support, but there still is that question of that additional 3% that did appear to take place without permit. So either way, we're looking at a lot coverage overage in its present form, or if a new patio is approved.
Well.
Any other questions?
My feeling on it is if plans were approved back before we shortened and narrowed the coverage, it went from 40 to 35, and I was not on this board in 2008, and I will certainly, I think that if you relied on the approval that you got, we should stick with it. On the other hand, the approval was for a deck, not a patio, and for as much as we have come down on people who even thought about coming to this board going over 40% to take and be, I don't care if it's 53% or 58, it's way over, and I'm willing to honor what was approved before, but not a patio. A deck where the slats are set sufficiently apart that the water goes through.
What about permeable pavers?
If they're as good as, but I still think they restrict part of it.
Comments from other board members?
It looks like a variance. Where it says, it said it should have been triggered, that a variance should have been asked for at that time, and that wasn't, that didn't happen. So if that's the case, then the village has to honor what happened. If it's our mistake, or it didn't get through somehow, if something changed or...
I think the question, that's absolutely correct, that it should have been triggered during the original planning review. However, that was 49.6%, and what was actually shown on the as-built is 53%. So despite any error on the village's behalf, there was an additional amount of impermeable surface coverage that was added above and beyond.
Which was the driveway?
The changes to the driveway, correct?
Did you do the driveway yourself, or did you have somebody do it?
My contractor did everything. I acted as the general. We submitted a permit for everything. When we dug for the driveway and the forms were put up, it was inspected. Sincerely, if I would have had the money in 2008 to finish the patio when I wanted to do it, initially, I would have done it. I waited two years, I came in like a good citizen and asked for, to apply for a permit. And that started in March, and here it is August. So I sincerely want a patio. Could I sell the house the way it is now? No, because it's dangerous. You can't walk out, and the way it was designed was intended to have a patio there.
What changed on the, from the patio, I mean, from the deck to the patio?
I prefer to have a patio. I've had many decks in, at homes in my life and maintenance, and I want to put something that's going to stay there forever, and I don't have to stain. This is my last house. I'll be here forever, and I want to do it the way I like to.
Other questions from board members?
I don't know, I'm uncomfortable with the going over 50. That's pushing the limit. I don't know who dropped the ball, where it was, why it dropped, but I think we have to do everything we can to keep it within under 50. That was, if it was 49.6, I think that's what we should be accepting. I mean, this could happen over and over again. Other people could come in and say, "Well, I didn't know, and I already got it down." I don't know. And not to say one way or the other, we've heard many times, people came in here and said, "We're going to stay here for the rest of our life," and the moment it gets approved, it gets put on the market. So hopefully you will, I hope you will, but I don't know. That's a big jump. I don't know if I ever remember approving anything over 50. Trying to go back and remember all the years, and I just don't remember anything being that large. What is the situation in that area, Shannon, for drainage?
I do not believe this was identified as one of the problem areas within our recent study. And I believe the neighbors have also indicated that they haven't had any flooding during the meetings previous.
Okay, so this has been up there except for the patio?
Another way to look at it is the backyard was once 100% covered.
Yeah, that's a really good point. This is really a unique situation. I've been by the home, I looked at it, I walked around it, you weren't home.
That was you?
He was home.
Caught the cops.
Maybe you were home. You know, I don't like the idea of more than half of a lot covered, but I think this is a very, very unique set of circumstances. We made a mistake. We missed, you know, something somewhere along the line. I suppose, I mean, a deck is a deck, and a patio is a patio, but what defines a deck? I mean, could he not put that maintenance-free decking material six inches above the ground? And now he has a deck and walks right out of his kitchen door onto that? I mean, that's not what he wants, but he probably could do that.
But that's what was in the original plans.
Right. Well, that's my point. It wasn't to pave it, it was to... That's exactly what I mean. If he doesn't want a deck, deck, tall deck, he'd do it six or five inches above the ground, and now it's a deck. It's a tough one. I certainly see your dilemma, and I definitely understand the hardship here.
What I had suggested to the planning commission was to put a drain in the center, and to have an inch drop from the house to the end, and the water goes right to the backyard, including the drain. There's about a five-foot drop from the back of my lot to McNauton property, and right behind me is a big storm sewer. There is no water issues in my area at all that I'm aware of, and I've lived there two years.
Well, I'm not going to vote on whether, whether they're not. I mean, for the people that are watching this, because I don't want to have people come in and say, "We don't, you know, look at Christopher Burke's study, and we don't have a water issue, so I can go to nearly 60% lot coverage." This sets such a bad precedent, and, you know, like I say, I don't know how this got passed, and then it was added to beyond what was approved, which also doesn't make me happy. And then you want us to approve more of something that wasn't even originally asked for. I can't run the numbers in my head, but the percentage over what everybody else is bound to is incredible. So I can't do it.
I think the easiest way to solve this would be, honestly, if you would look at a low-maintenance type product and use that as your deck, which is part of the original plan. I understand and I appreciate what you want to put there, but coverage over 50%, and this goes back to a property that we had next door to when this all started, because it all ended up, I mean, there was basically no green space. As it stands right now, I could not be in favor of this being a solid surface in that area. Whether or not, per se, there's water issues or not, these are the circumstances and situations that got us into that case in several different areas. The only thing that I would have to say is, I would not have a problem if you went back to the original plans. If you put a deck on, then that's part of the original plans, and there would be no reason whatsoever for there to be a variance. If, I mean, based on the fact that that was approved prior to the changes that we made, and it's actually that way in the file, there shouldn't be any reason why he wouldn't be able to do that, correct?
The permit had expired, and when the permit has expired, it's required to reapply, and then you do have to comply with the ordinance that is in effect at the time of application, unfortunately.
Even at that point, then, I mean, I would still say I would be fine with a deck, but not a concrete patio.
Because if the egress is three feet above ground, obviously, it was going to be a walkout, and that's, I'd agree to that, too, that even though the permits expired and all that, that we approve what was originally, what was originally approved.
I'm on board with that.
Back in 2008, when we initially approved this, and then it was the driveway that actually put it over what we approved, is that correct?
The driveway was shown on the 2008 plans that were the permit drawings that were approved. There were some field changes that were made to the configuration of the concrete, I think especially around the driveway area, or, excuse me, the garage area, that netted a result of 3% increase overall.
But wouldn't we have caught that and stopped the work during the inspection process?
I can't speak for how the inspection process took place at that point. Those inspectors are no longer with us.
See, I kind of feel like we dropped the ball in more than one place.
It should have been stopped during the permit process. It should have been stopped when it submitted my...
So I'm kind of going back and forth here. I definitely understand this hardship, and on the other hand, I wouldn't want to see any lot in this town covered, you know, with more than 50% lot coverage. But nothing's ever black and white. It can't ever be black and white. It's just, life doesn't work in black and white.
But originally, you went for a deck?
Yeah, that's correct. That's what my plan said, and I'm requesting for a patio, sir. And quite honestly, if I put a deck up and, you know, you have a quarter inch slot in between, I don't think it's going to make any significant difference as far as water runoff.
The actuality, it does. It's considered as 50% coverage.
Okay, the proposal I made to the planning commission was to put a drain in the center of it, and the water would go right to my backyard from the patio.
Okay, so you're going to take water and run it off into the backyard?
Right.
Well, we have a lot of people who have done that, and that has eventually posed problems. Now, even though McNauton may have a storm sewer, that storm sewer may not be directly connected to your particular area. Not all storm sewers are directly connected. I can attest to that by what's been going on over here on Quincy for the last several weeks, where I worked during the day with what's going on. But, I mean, the only thing that I can honestly say is, I have no problem with a deck, and there are materials that are made nowadays that are extremely low maintenance, that would not take a constant staining and upkeep on a constant basis.
Well, that's why I suggested that. I thought that might be an option.
You know, I mean, we are in a very, very difficult spot. We have fought long and hard as far as lot coverages in this village. And granted, not, you know, I'm not denying the fact that somebody dropped the ball, or they did or didn't, or whatever, but that still doesn't make it right for us to approve a coverage over 50%.
He's asking for a change that wasn't, excuse me, he was asking for a change from the original plans.
Take it way over.
To take it way over. He was, it was bad enough the way it was, but now, but if he leaves it the way it is with the patio, or with the deck, like you said before, there's no issue.
Shannon, when he, when this house came in, did it ever go before the planning and zoning back in 2008?
No.
It was within its means supposedly, or it just overlooked the problem?
That's correct. It did not go before planning and zoning.
So right now, there is no variance even covering for what he has. Do you think we should be looking at least at covering a variance to protect what he has, even with a wood deck? Because if this ever comes back to a board level before, and he's never had a variance even on the house portion and the driveway as it is, would this cause a problem in future times when he comes?
That's very well.
I'm wondering if we should approve at least of what he's got?
Or if he sells the house and somebody else wants to do something on it, and they come up before his...
Okay, Mr. Attorney.
Well, that's up to you guys.
Where do we go with this one?
Well, first, I want to get on the record that when someone comes in with a building permit application, it's their obligation to comply with the village's codes and ordinances, and know what they are, and build something that conforms with it, whether it's the setbacks, the lot coverage, the height, whatever. It is possible for staff to miss a calculation and make a mistake. Illinois case law is clear that even though staff overlooks something, makes a mistake, it's still the homeowner's responsibility to comply with the ordinances of the village. And if it's discovered after the fact, the homeowner could be forced to remove the encroachment or whatever it is to comply. You've probably heard of cases of municipalities going after homeowners whose as-built roof height exceeded the maximum 35 feet, or whatever it may be, and people have had to chop their roofs off after the fact, even when, you know, staff had approved plans. It happens. There are also cases where it goes the other way, where it's clear that something was missed by staff, and they're not going to, years after the fact, put that burden on the homeowner. But I think there's fault here on both sides. I think the applicant came in with a house that was way over the lot coverage and should have known better, and the village didn't catch it. So shame on the village as well. How you want to handle it, you know, that's up to you guys. As far as your question with the, let's say you don't grant a variance for this, but do you have the option of granting a variance for what is built currently, just to protect, for example, let's say the house is burned down, and he wants to rebuild using the same footprint? No? That's up to you guys. You certainly can do that. I don't know if you necessarily want, if the house burns down, to let it be rebuilt out of code, but that would be the only advantage that I see. down, to let it be rebuilt out of code, but that would be the only advantage that I see in granting a variance for what is actually built now.
So, the variance will follow with the house and it doesn't end if the house is destroyed?
Well, I guess it depends on how you word it. But usually the granting of a variance would make that house, you're essentially saying it's conforming. And if it's destroyed, he'd say, "Hey, I built a house. I had a variance for it. I now want to rebuild it using the same footprint."
And what about if the house was sold and somebody else buys it now and they don't know they're getting a house that's...
Well, then if they want to add on to it, of course, they'd have to come in and get a variance.
Where are they going to go?
Real quick though, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, that's not your job though.
I know.
I, I agree. I, 57.3% is just way over and I'm, consider myself pretty reasonable and I, I think you have to understand the circumstances as well and maybe, yeah, I know you want the patio. I understand that. I, you know, but I think it's time where we, I'm fine with the original plans. I wasn't on the board at that time. It's something that we did, the village did at that time. I think the village should stick by that rather than, you know, hurting you this many years after the fact. I, I just think you need to be a little more flexible. I, I would hope you would be so we could work out something with a deck or maybe a, using some of the weatherized material that doesn't require, you know, staining and treatment every year, every other year. But the 57% is just too high. I, I, I mean, I would, I don't know what's going to happen, but I, I think it's, I wish you a little more flexible with it.
Trustee Scott mentioned permeable pavers. Might that be an option?
The type that have the holes in them, is that what you're talking about? What I was really going to use is recycled granite. That was my plan.
Oh, okay, okay. Or, you know, I said it half, half in just, but, you know, maybe an option is, as I originally said, by, you know, use the maintenance-free decking and just put a very, very low, close-to-the-ground deck. So, you still got that patio effect.
Right.
But yet you're within what was approved.
What my plan was, was to use recycled granite and there's a quarter-inch joint that has permeable sand in between that the water goes through.
Okay, is there anyone here in the public who can put on this request? Any final comments from board members before we, before I ask for a motion? May we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emory.
Final comments? Roll call.
This is just very, very difficult, but that is an awful lot of lot coverage.
Trustee Scott?
No.
Trustee Clebano?
No.
Trustee Emory?
No.
Trustee Seneca?
No.
Trustee Nero?
No.
Trustee Fleming?
No.
What about the deck option? Will I have to come back or...
If that was, if that was approved?
But it expired.
I think we all pretty much said tonight that we'd be willing to live with what was approved back when.
You never indicated any willingness on your part to, that you would consider that.
I'm considering it now.
That would cut the lot coverage in the three, what, 3% increase in half? So, it would be one and a half percent increase. If you're willing to do that and there's a board member, anyone who voted against this could do a motion to reconsider and they would, to allow a deck instead of a patio at essentially 50% additional lot coverage from what was proposed.
Then we could do that now.
Yes. It's preferred you do it now, actually.
Motion to reconsider the variance request on the basis of rewarding it for purposes of the minutes and the variance, if granted, for the purpose of constructing a deck, not a patio.
Second, Scott.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Thank you for coming in, sir. Next item, 809 Megan Court zoning code variance request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request to allow lot coverage greater than 35% for the purpose of constructing a deck.
Hello, Mayor and trustees. I am Prakash Deepaparam and this is my wife, Sasi Devi Guchpalli. I live at 809 Megan Court. I applied for the variance to construct a deck in my backyard. The backyard has a very steep grade and the easement for utilities prevent to build any playsets or swimming pool for the children to play. The setback of the building did not leave any other options for using the backyard. Based on our lifestyle, the only viable alternative for enjoying our backyard is to build a deck. By allowing us to build a deck, we'd be able to enjoy our lifestyle, lifetime investment in few summer months we have. The, the deck would also extend the annual usage of outdoor environment. There is a drain right in our backyard, which my neighbors also use for stormwater management that will, all this rainwater will go to a pond constructed by the builder, McNauton builders. Because of the steep slope, any rainwater will immediately flow to the drainage system instead of seeping through the ground. So, it does not matter whether I exceed by 1%. It is not going to impact of any stormwater management. We do not plan to put anything under the deck, so the deck is fully open, so all the rain, whatever falls through, it will go into the ground. So, I'm not abstracting anything else in there. As I mentioned before, the house is located in the Fairfield line, built by McNauton builders. The builder is known for its excellent quality construction and provided ample allowance for stormwater management by providing a huge retention pond. The pond and the grading of the land in our subdivision are part of most of the standards. And we don't have any objections from the neighbors. I talked to them. They say they're all okay with constructing a deck. And most of my neighbors have the huge decks in their backyard, so by constructing that, it's not going to change the characters of the surrounding area. I'm also, the deck size is only about 326 square feet, so with a half the coverage, it comes only to 163 square feet, which is like 0.17% of the total lot area. So, I'm not exceeding that much in terms of lot coverage. So, I request the village to approve to build a deck in my backyard. Thank you.
Shannon, would you give us the staff's perspective on this request, please?
Some of the board members may recall back in 2007, we heard from McNauton builders specifically related to this phase of Fairfield, that a number of homes had lot coverage issues or that they anticipated they would have lot coverage issues. This particular one, their as-built lot coverage is about 41.1%, which again is over the 40% that was in effect at the time that the permits were issued. The proposed deck is 326 square feet and as the petitioners indicated, it would be open to the ground below, but it would bring lot coverage up to 42.6%. There, they do have a unique situation in that the grade change behind the property is very significant. There's a photo in your packets, which I'll put on the overhead. Might be a bad reproduction here, but you'll get the gist. This doesn't even, this photo, but it doesn't even begin to show the, the true characteristics of the rear yard here. You can kind of get a sense from the location of, of the deck that they have to come down about two flights to get to the ground below, but the grade continues to drop. Where you see this shadow, it's actually an even further drop to the, to the rear property line.
It's like 10 feet.
How far is the drop from the rear entrance of the house to the ground?
You said it's about 10 feet from the door, is that the kitchen door?
Yeah, kitchen.
Kitchen door to the ground below.
10 feet.
Let's put it this way. If they wanted to build a patio, they'd have to tie a lifeline to the door or the house so they didn't roll down into the ravine. That's how bad it is. I'm familiar with Megan Court and you really can't use your backyard much at all. So...
I personally, I wondered as I took these photos, how you guys even managed to mow the lawn, just because walking down was so difficult.
And there is a shared detention facility at the rear of the yard?
It's like three houses.
Right. It's all an easement that goes to the shared detention.
Questions? Other questions from board members? Comments?
I know it goes over, but I have no problem with it because it's such a unique situation and it, and the way that it was constructed, with the ravine and the water going out and the fact that despite their lot size, it's virtually useless on such a slope. So, I'm in favor of it.
I agree very much.
I have no issue with it.
Anyone here from the public on this item? Any final comments from board members before we ask for a motion? Motion, please.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emory.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Clebano?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Thank you. Should, uh...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Make the rear of your yard a little more usable, other than as a ski slope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees.
I can bungee jump off the deck. Set up a little revenue stream.
Next item, 310 South Washington zoning code variance request. Board to consider ordinances approving requests for the following zoning code variances. A, variance to allow lot coverage greater than 35% for the purpose of constructing a shed. B, variance to allow construction of an accessory structure within the required 10-foot setback to a principal building. And C, variance to allow an accessory structure closer than five feet to rear lot line. Yes, sir?
My name is Frank Mendick. I do live at the address 310 South Washington. I'm not quite that prepared with the computer and I only brought a couple of those, but just to note the, the shed that used to be in the backyard and then the unusual large driveway, and I think that'll open up a discussion for everybody here. I guess, you know, went through a divorce, rented a house two years in Westmont, like Westmont, bought this house that's three blocks from my sister and that would be last, last fall. I went in March to see about building a custom garage. I had, used to have a four-car garage. And I'm learning the rules of the city the hard way. I was turned down or I guess probably the terminology is due to the uniqueness of where the house sits, that I would not be able to build a new garage. So, I inquired about a shed. Yeah, I can build a shed. Then, you know, I'd have to take a tree down, have to do this, and I know I did wrong. I should be penalized. It has been very embarrassing for me. I've had some support from my neighbors that came to the last meeting. I worked for the city of Downers for 19 years. I know what's right and wrong and I did wrong. How can we come to some conclusion? You know, Shannon's been more than helpful about what you can and can't do and I'm learning the hard way. Same thing as you'll see the square foot. I bought a house that's way over the square foot of the impermeable space, but I, again, when I bought the house, I was just glad to get something and call it a home and try to rebuild my life. We had talked about, you know, can I take up some of the asphalt driveway? You can see the asphalt driveway. I can probably park 14 cars on it. The old shed and playground set, my calculations, the playset was six by seven, or the, the shed was six by seven, which is 42 square feet. The raised playset was 60 square feet, which is 102, and my shed that I built now is 128. So, I've added to the square foot property 26 foot. But again, I'm, I did wrong. It's in the wrong spot. I did, I'm a certified arborist. I didn't want to take the tree down. Now, if I were to reassess the tree after the last two storms, it might be a different, different outlook in all honesty. I've had nothing but so many compliments from neighbors about what I've done to the property in such a short time, but what can we do that would allow me to keep the shed where it is? If I have to move it six inches, you might as well have me move it five feet and I can move the shed too. It's just built on patio stone base, so I'll do whatever you people tell me to do. Hopefully it means leaving the shed where it's at, but after listening to things, you know, I'll, I'm open for suggestions and plead ignorancy, whatever you want to say.
Well, you have cleaned the property up nicely and there's not a lot you can do when you buy a house and it's got what it's got on it. It's not like, you know, you backed up the cement trucks and went to town. It does look like you tore down Abe Lincoln's original home in the shed pictures because it's a log cabin, but, and plus, I've been by there. I looked at it when we got our package and you don't have, you don't have anywhere to go and to tear out one of those old trees would be a crime. So, on this one, it is what it is. So, I'm in favor of the variance.
Well, as your neighbor down the alley, I got no problem with what you've done because that property is 100% better than what it was.
Thank you.
And you're right. You could park 14 vehicles on that drive because I've seen as many as eight.
I got one car.
As far as the way the shed sits, it's all the way up against that back fence, up against the alley. Yeah, it comes up over the fence, maybe a foot and a half, give or take. I don't know. Maybe you get to the roof height. But, yeah, I, I will honestly sit here and say as being a, being an employee of our, one of our fellow villagers, shame on you.
I...
You know better.
Yes, sir.
But from, from a pure aesthetic and upgrading of the property, I mean, he's gone way beyond in, in cleaning this property up based on what it was. I mean, if anybody, the last tenants who moved out, I think for a period of like four or five days, there's a pile of stuff out in front of that house that I don't know when they were going to get rid of it, but, no, I, as, as a case, and I, I don't want anybody to think that they can just go out and build a shed in their backyard and then come in after the fact and go, "Oh, I goofed." No, it doesn't work that way. There's certain set of circumstances that we look at as a board and we judge and think about. And in this particular case, I mean, I, you know, I, I guess the proper thing, the proper thing to do, and this, this may be a real hard case, is have you pay a small fine just for what, what you did. And I'm not saying an arm and a leg, but I'm just saying, you know, something to, so the public knows that we're not going to just say, "Okay, go ahead."
We had something similar to this up on Agden Avenue. We had him take the building down.
Right. That was a garage.
That, that was even...
That was very egregious.
Right.
It was an accessory structure being used as a principal structure with all sorts of problems.
But again, a person who knew that he wasn't supposed to build it there and built it there anyhow.
We had somebody deny pork more concrete than he knew he was supposed to. So, I'm not in favor of a fine.
Okay.
Well, at the, and I'm honest, at the original meeting, chances will maybe, you know, present them, and I did my packet of removing some of the driveway. Again, I, I've got one vehicle, I'd like to get a second, but the garage won't solidify it. In fact, I've got Community Asphalt talking to me about doing something with the driveway. Again, I've shot my wad this last year, so I'm kinda, until next year, if I have to remove some of the driveway, I can do that, I'm pretty handy, I can take a...
Mr. Mendick, when things are going your way, stop.
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this, this is the same way of saying, shh, be very quiet.
I know I did wrong, I mean, I guess when you look at the fine, the variances, five hundred bucks it's cost me, the embarrassment putting a sign on my front lawn that made me feel like a criminal, but that was justifiable.
Well, this is not the DuPage County courthouse, this is the Village Board of Westmont, and I'm, I, there's no way I would ever assess a fine in this particular set of circumstances. It's a unique situation, I'm, I understand, and I'm okay with it.
The neighbor behind you, looks like their shed is almost on the exact location on their lot.
Oh, yeah.
Because yours is on your lot.
The...
Uh-huh.
The whole...
Yep.
The whole back is like that, sir.
All the way down.
That's kinda why I did what I did, thinking that, but I know better, I was in management at the city.
Is there anything else you'd like to confess?
The divorce got me pretty good. I'm lucky to have half a wife.
So I guess, in essence, what we're saying is let sleeping dogs lie.
I think we're saying we're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the public on this item? With that being said, I would accept a motion.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Item A.
Item A. Not item A, item A.
Item A?
Item A.
Item A.
Motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second.
Okay, roll call on item A, please.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Point B.
To approve, Emory, item B.
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Point C.
Motion to approve, Emory.
Second, Seneca.
Roll call.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
No more, no more confessions required. You are excused, my man.
Stop now.
I appreciate your help, and as well, Shannon, she doesn't take sides, but she lets you know what's right and wrong, and I worked at a city, and I think you had a good girl working for you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
We like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, elected official identification. Board to consider types of identification that are issued to elected officials.
Trustee Fleming had asked if we could put this item on the agenda for discussion. We've had some inquiries recently and some discussion amongst the board members about the issuance of metal-style badges. It is something that we have provided in the past to board members. We did do a, not a comprehensive survey, but we did a survey of most of our neighboring communities to find out the types of identification they provide to their elected officials. We only found two communities that still issue the metal badges. From what I've been able to determine, I guess that, you know, is a tradition that is probably kind of going away at this point. It was something that started many, many, many years ago, came over from England when, when the country was first formed. The idea was to provide a badge as a form of official identification, because a lot of people couldn't read, and it was just carried on for many years as a tradition. So we, as trustee Fleming asked, we wanted to talk about, you know, what type of policy we want to have in regards to that. We do currently issue business cards and photo IDs, which seems to be most, is what most of the other communities do as well, so. The two communities that we found that do issue badges are the city of Velmhurst and the city of Oakwood Terrace.
Well, so that the people at home know what we were considering, or I shouldn't say what we were considering, what was provided to us, for us wonderful trustees to carry, and so you can tell where I'm going with this.
He'll turn on.
It'll come on.
Okay. Okay. Gold shields, oh, excuse me, badges. Now, it's come back to me that somebody on this board was insisting they wanted a badge, and I want to know one good reason, because this isn't jolly old England, and we can all read, why we need badges.
I mean, my whole thing went back to the point, it was something that Ray did many years ago, and I mean, when I received mine, I didn't even know what I was supposed to do with it, matter of fact, I'm not even sure where mine is. I mean, I don't, I don't see the purpose of carrying any type of a metal badge or whatever. I think it's a case that, I think if we have a village ID with our picture on it, we have our business cards, maybe it's a case that we look at some type of identification, and maybe we can pin on our jacket or pin on a shirt if we go to a chamber event or something like that, but I think the days of issuing, you know, what I would say somewhat are like law enforcement-type product badges or insignias, whatever, I just don't think it's the proper way to go anymore, and I just, I, I don't, I don't think it's the proper thing to do.
I, you know, I, I have no problem with it, I have one back from the day, and it clearly states village trustee, it doesn't look like anything to do with law enforcement. I would say anybody that wants one, if they're willing to take on that cost, it's just like when trustee Fleming wanted the iPads, and we said, hey, you know, taxpayers don't need to pay for that, taxpayers don't need to pay for an ID. So I say if anybody wants to buy one, buy it, doesn't, I don't, it doesn't bother me one way or the other.
What's the purpose of having a particular badge or insignia like this?
I don't think there even needs to be a purpose, if someone wants to spend the money and wants it.
Then what difference does it make, if we're saying, if we're saying...
I think there is a purpose, I, I think...
And what is that, trustee Nero?
I think it's an effective communication tool, and I have a personal story for this. The first storm, one of three we had, on the way back from Chicago, was at, at a baseball game, all the trees were down on Ogden Avenue, traffic was closed, policemen was there, Public Works were out, firefighters were out, whom I didn't know. I don't know all of them, obviously I'm new to the board, you may know more than, of them than me. I asked what was going on, in the heat of everything, he didn't know who I was, I had a business card, you know, I flashed that, obviously he was in a hurry, I didn't get any answers, I didn't know what happened until the following day. That's where, that's where I said, hey, you know, I knew some of the trustees had it, a lot of the older trustees have them, including yourself, I thought it would be an effective tool. So after that, I went and discussed with a few other villages and cities that weren't on the survey list, Lombard as well, Elmhurst was on there, and I asked them what their advantage was of having it, and they said the same thing. It's an effective communication tool, you use it in time of need, I understand we have an ID card, I didn't have that with me, I would assume that, you know, maybe I'll keep it in my car or something, but that, that was the, that was my rationale for it. Is it necessary? No, I mean, it clearly says village trustee.
Okay.
And that's why I think the cost should, should be absorbed by the trustee, wearing it or carrying it or whatever, however you use it.
It doesn't say, I mean, it, I have mine with me, if you want me, I'll put it up on there for the rest of the people to see. It's clearly a star, a police star. With a little logo underneath that says if you get close enough...
But I mean, it wouldn't have to be that one.
Did you want it? No, hang on a second, let me...
See, the thing is, we have, I can't ever remember even attempting to use it for that. With a, with a village ID, you'll have, you should have two IDs which they're issuing tonight, picture IDs, which, I mean, mine's...
Put that up there.
Mine, from what I remember, is even different from that.
You gotta be up closer to be able to...
You have, you have your picture, you have what your position is within the village on this ID. You shouldn't need anything other than that. What's wrong with the picture ID?
Well, let me ask you this, if someone's willing to pay for their own, why shouldn't they have it?
Well, I'll tell you why, because first of all, the writing is so small on these that it is extremely deceptive, that if somebody flashes a badge, when they come upon a scene where there are police or fire there, it's extremely deceptive, it is distracting to those people, and if somebody thinks that they ought to use it in order to get information, they are, one, interfering with the police and fire trying to do their job, and, two, if they think that they should get information, which they can then relay to their constituents or whomever, they are doing so and probably interfering with an investigation, because nobody on this board better be talking to anybody about what the police and fire do until we are cleared by the chiefs as to what happens and what we are allowed to tell, so that we do not compromise any situation, any scene, or any investigation. And I'll tell you something, if I'm ever at a situation where the police and fire are there, and I see somebody flash a badge and say, I'm a trustee and I want to know what's going on, I'm gonna start filming.
It was down power lines, but I'd like to hear what the chief has to say about this, because it wasn't interfering with anything, it was, you know, I want to know why the street was closed, I thought it was a pretty general question to ask.
I've heard of elected officials calling when they get stopped in the car for a violation, so, I mean, it goes a lot of ways.
I mean, it was a matter of me getting information and passing it on of why Ogden Avenue was closed in the middle of a storm, thought it was perfectly justifiable. However, I still would like to hear what the chief has to say, as the professional.
I want to be clear, trustee Nero, I know nothing about your situation, I have not heard, no complaints, nothing about what you're relating to Ogden Avenue.
I have no reason to complain.
The first time hearing of this is tonight. The issue on the, the badge issue, manager Searle had asked, we had spoke today, I had given the examples to manager Searle, my advice would be is, this is too similar to our, the police officer's badge, you know, as much I'm wearing here. If the board does decide to go with the badge, my recommendation would be, number one, that it not be the style, I talked to manager Searle, it should be a style other than the fire style and style currently in use by the village, so that it does not conflict with what we're wearing. I made some notes, bear with me here. I guess, first and foremost, this decision has to be made by the village board, the following, since you asked, are my opinions and observations concerning the issuance of a badge, and there's a little bit of history, I didn't know about the history from England, but when most people see a badge, they immediately associate the badge with the first responder, whether that be a firefighter or a police officer, usually they associate the badge to be that of a law enforcement official. As was discussed earlier, when the badge is displayed, it's the visual image of, is associated with law enforcement, especially if it's displayed when you're trying to take some type of enforcement action. If you are initiating some type of enforcement action, it's going to be, they are not going to hear that you're a village trustee, they're gonna hear that, see the badge, they're gonna think you're a police officer. Since nine eleven, towns have pulled back issuing of badges. Since nine eleven, usually what is best is, you know, a, an ID card. When our officers are trained, whether they be off-duty or in plain clothes, or they're done, they do carry identification, they carry their ID card, and they also carry a wallet, but in doing so, when they announce their office in plain clothes, we ask them to make sure that they have the other tools that could handle the situation, that'd be either handcuffs or a weapon or something like that, if they're gonna take some type of enforcement action. The reason we make this a priority is because not all of us are peaceful, and some members of the public are resentful or known, are openly hostile towards police, displaying a badge could lead to a confrontation, and especially if someone's not in compliance, that, that encounter could be turned to be peaceful or otherwise. Again, badges are a symbol of authority, and normally associated with law enforcement and fire service. They are also items that can be obtained very easily on the internet. They also can be purchased by people, we've come across people who are using them for illegal means. They're also very popular for other states, I know a person that cuts my hair has a concealed carry permit in two other states, one in Arizona and one in Florida, and he has badges for both, and he'll display that if you try to, there's a video I've seen on the news now from Ohio, where the person's trying to show his concealed carry permit, that can be, they're used for different purposes. On traffic stops, they are a quick identifier, however, I can be honest with you, in all the traffic stops that I've made, and I've made many, a lot of them have been with police officers, and the first thing they will show you is, I'm a police officer, and I show the badge. I don't care about a badge, a badge says nothing to me. What I want to see is the commission card that, or the identification card that goes with that badge. In my mind, and most of our officers, they want to see the ID card. The ID card is what backs up the badge. In our line of business, anybody could have a badge, we want to see the ID card. That's why I think for all these reasons, which I've stated, it's, it's the utmost important that village employees issue a displayed village identification card and have that card with them, you shall have your ID cards with you and display them. The card can adequately identify you as a village official. If the badge is decided to be issued by the board, my recommendation is, is that you have the ID card with the badge at the same time. Again, this decision is, a decision is to be made by the board, either one, it's a caution and safety. I have two recommendations, I would recommend the ID card, if you go with a badge, I'm not gonna say no, it's, again, it's a readily identifiable form of identification. One other thing, which I would also recommend, and I know village officials have had in the back, and again, this is for the board to decide, on your vehicle, not all of us know your personal vehicles, not all, you know, if you're trying to get in someplace, there used to be a round decal that was white in color and had like a blue star, I wouldn't say a badge, but a blue star, that said elected official, or it said village official on it. This is many, many, many years ago, like, I don't want to say within the last ten years, but I do remember seeing them in my history as a police officer here, that elected officials were given that, if that would be on the vehicle, and that would be the trustee's option as to whether you wish to display that or not, that could be displayed. Now, in this situation, they would also help back up, if you're pulling up, the officer sees you, you know, they may be able to see the sticker and, you know, then help identify you as a village official. And speaking with the manager, came across two other options which could be considered by the village, or by the trustees, in lieu of a badge. What I'm showing you here is identification holders, I'm not gonna be, I'll show you this one first. This is something that's the size of a business card holder, on the outside, you could either have a metal replica of the village's logo, or you could have a village logo, or whichever you choose to be on that, and on the, that'd be on the outside, and on the inside, you can have your business card, or you could have your ID card in lieu of a badge, this way it also goes to identify you as a village official for the officers or somebody else who may not know you. As you can see, this was used by Homeland Security, again, it's the size of a business card holder, again, could identify you as a village trustee. Option number two, and this is something which akin to, what made me think of this is the FBI. The FBI does not show you a badge, the FBI will show you their credentials. Anytime an FBI agent comes into the police department, they will show you your credentials. Their credentials are bigger, they're about the size, double the size of this, and that's what you see here. What's very hard to see up here in the black area, is you'll see, it says, in this case, this says Director Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, and on the outside, you can have embossed, or if you wanted to do a metal something on the outside, the logo of the village, which you could put here as trustee, trustee's name, Village of Westmont, a three-line. Again, this is a little bit bigger, this is bigger than a driver's license, would not fit in your normal wallet. The options are there. there. Our opinion is, is that you see a badge, a badge can be mistaken as a law enforcement tool. You show a badge to most people, they will think you're a police officer, you know, you're identifying yourself as a village trustee, yet the village has issued them in the past, and they, as evidenced here, they have in the past. My recommendation would be is if you go with the badge, that be not the style of the police officers or the firefighters. I would go with the ID card, I would go with the, uh, the, uh, vehicle identification, if you so choose. If you go with a badge, again, you have to consider a badge holder, and you could do, there are other options as well that we considered.
Chief Mulholland, did you call all these other towns to find out who had badges?
I believe the manager did that, I did not. I can do another survey if you want, I can become more extensive.
No. I'm curious, how much time have you spent on this issue?
Too much.
No, no, to be honest with you, the only time I worked on it was this afternoon to get these two options here today. Less than an hour. Just to draft up, type up my notes, the manager asked if I'd be prepared, in case I am asked my opinion. I did want to have some talking points and to try to get these options as well. Less than an hour.
Thank you.
So, bottom line, if a person wants a badge similar to the one that you're wearing, they're available.
They, oh, they are available. As you saw, and I, I sort of gave the list of trustee Emery had, I got that from a police magazine to give to the manager for different styles. You can go on the internet right now, unfortunately, you can go on the internet and you can buy a Westmont Police Department replica. It's made in Germany and shipped from overseas. You can go over and see that, we've seen examples of it. It has the old style where we have a badge number at the very top, and it's 104. That's the example that we've seen. There has been legislation, the state has moved to restrict the issuance of badges. Our police supplier needs a letter from me before they can issue a badge. If you were to walk up to Ray Heron's and want a badge, they're gonna want to see an ID, and if you can't provide a village ID, they're gonna be contacting me. They try to rein it in, but the internet, as we all know, is, can get anything. Again, it's the board's desire, the board's decision, not mine. My recommendation, if you do decide to go with a badge, it, it could be silver, it could be bigger, it could be smaller. I would just suggest a style that's not similar to ours. And again, I, what I like, to be quite honest with you, is one of these two options. The cost is there, I would suggest a metal. You see challenge coins? You can put something like that on the outside of the container, which would be similar to what the, the federal agents use, and you show your credentials that way. To me, in our stops, and I, I spoke to the, my deputy chiefs today, too, of importance is, you know, someone has stopped or someone questions me, and trustee Neary or the officer should have said, you know, "You're a village trustee, show me some form of identification." They should not take you at your word, they should also know who you are. I'm very disappointed in the fact that they don't know who our elected officials are. They should know that, and on sight. But absent that, you should be able to walk up and say, "I'm a village trustee, here's my identification," and verify that. They shouldn't, you know, they should probably direct you to talk to their supervisor, and the sergeant should either contact you or come to the scene and talk to you. As far as, you know, up there, what's going on, what's happening, you know, I've done that. I was on Ogden Avenue in the last storm, we closed Ogden Avenue for about two hours, and each car, people were coming up and realizing it was inconvenience, and it was a different situation, what's going on, we said, "There's lines down, and you can't go that way." You know, we took, took the time to talk to each person, because those that stopped and asked what's going on. Normally, we don't do that, normally, officers directing traffic don't do that. If you were to pull up and say, "I'm a village trustee, can you quickly tell me what's going on?" They should give you a very quick thumbnail, stut sketch, and just so you're not obstructing traffic beyond the way. If you have more, you know, you can either contact, you know, the supervisor, contact me directly, we can get the information that way. If you're offering help, we're not gonna say no to help, depending on knowing what, you know, you want, what the situation is, and, you know, they, but the identification should be readily available, and they should ask for that.
Thanks.
Well, my opinion is, since there is no policy, and years ago, it was decided by a village manager to take it upon himself and do this, and it doesn't seem like the board voted on it, or at least I'm not aware of it. I'd say we leave it in the hands of the village manager again. I don't think the trustee should decide on it, because we didn't decide on it the last time we had a trustees that were here. So, let the village manager decide it, or the mayor decide on it.
And, and I agree with that, but I also agree with what the chief is saying. If, you know, if it is decided that there's some other form of identification for an elected official to have, it shouldn't really look too much like, you know, a police or fire badge. And Efrain Guards have them, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of identification out there. And, you know, I, yeah, I think it should be up to the, to the manager or to the mayor, and, but as a taxpayer and living here, I do believe it's not something the taxpayers should have to pay for, it's more of a luxury than a necessity. So, if anyone wanted it, I would just say that they would have to, you know, pay for it.
I, I can be honest with you, truly the importance of what, you know, some of the officers place on badges and talking with the deputy chiefs again today. The badge in my wallet, right now, is just deputy chief, because I haven't paid for a chief's badge. And yours, normally, if you were to ask to see some identification, I can show you. My badge wallet is, it's hidden, the badge is hidden. I, I try to make, I take what you'll see first, is you'll see my ID card. And whenever I go shopping or anywhere, I said, "I don't want anyone to see the badge, the badge is always hidden," they usually don't see the ID card, but to readily identify myself, I use the ID card. Now, if it was an arrest or an enforcement situation, that's when the badge comes out, now it's just a police officer. They don't look to see deputy chief, they don't look to see chief. But trustee Seneca, this is something that the officers purchase themselves, their badge, their wallets are, mine's deputy chief, because I just, a badge costs, a badge like this will cost approximately $125.
And how much, and how much do our photo IDs cost?
I just want to clear something on the stickers that used to be on cars that town, that used to come when we had vehicle stickers, and they sent them free.
Yeah.
When we got rid of vehicle stickers, we no longer got stickers.
I agree with trustee Scott.
Pardon?
I agree with you, you know, let the village manager and the mayor make the decision.
And we're spending way too much time on something that's not really...
I brought it up, I think it'd be an issue, you know, I just thought it'd be more of a tool, but...
Well, I mean, the thing is, I think, from my, from my standpoint as a village trustee, I think the only thing that we need are business cards and our photo ID, and that's it. I don't think we need anything above and beyond that.
And that's right.
And I would, and I would prefer, and if I find mine, I'll bring it back in, you can recycle the damn thing. I don't need it, okay? I don't want it. I mean, I didn't understand when it was given to me to begin with, what the reasoning was behind it. I mean, I, you know, I was kind of a surprise when, when Ray handed this thing to me, so...
In 97, I was handed mine by Mayor Burke, and when I said, "What am I supposed to do with this?" He said, "Well, being a trustee in town, we're, being in town, we're supposed to be able to have arrest powers in Westmont." And I'm gone, "Are you out of your mind?"
Mayor Burke said that.
Yes, and Chief Zipcheck almost had a heart attack.
I'll bet.
I thought I was being my high horse arresting people or something.
I think you'd be picking me up off the floor as well.
Well, I mean, I think, I think, I think any given situation you would get into, if you have a, if you have a proper photo ID, if you show that, it's got dates on it, it's issued by the Village of Westmont, I think that that would be just fine. I don't think there's any reason whatsoever to have any type of a metal badge or insignia or whatever. I mean, if it's something that, you know, somebody wants to buy a little case for their ID badge, whatever, but, I mean, I'm just, I, I just think it's something that, I mean, it, it needs to, it's done its time, I think it needs to go away.
When I came back on in 2005, I had asked you back then, because my, we used to have a name plate, and they had some kind of a fake gold thing with black imprint, and mine was so scratched up. And back then, I said, "Can I get this replaced now that I'm a trustee again, because it's so scratched?" And you said, "We're not doing them anymore."
We haven't done them...
And I haven't figured out where I put that one either, because that got put away from the...
That is something that some other communities do include in their portfolio. I mean, that is something we could do if that is your preference as well. My preference would not be to issue the badges. I think initially...
Well, back then, we didn't have the IDs, back in 2005. I don't remember if we had the IDs by then or not.
Yes, we probably did, because I think we started the system pretty much after 9/11.
Okay, after 9/11, yeah.
As the chief said, there, there's been kind of a trend away from having the ability to be confused about officials' identity, I'll put it that way. My, and for that reason, I, having thought about it, I, I would not be in favor of the badges, but I like the, the credential idea, which the chief actually mentioned for the first time today.
Sure.
I think might be something to be worthy looking at, and that in combination with the ID cards that we already have, I think are, should be sufficient in terms of identification.
You need to be, identify yourself in the event, and that's why you'll see these, there's, you know, there's color coded. In the event of an emergency, in the event of a critical incident, you do have access to certain areas, and the areas are color-coded. And again, if you look at the ID cards, the highest level is red, and that's safe for department heads. This area would not get you into a secured area, but would get you into the emergency operations center, would get you possibly into the village emergency communications center.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go into the specifics of what...
No. What I'm saying is that you do, you do need some type of identification, the ID card cases, to show that you belong to the village. I mean, that, I think is imperative.
I know, when we set that system up, that was a specific concern we talked about, was to provide some type of identification to both elected officials and employees that could be used in situations like you described. So, I, I think it would work well for that.
So, you can just pull this from the agenda, and the minutes can reflect that no action was taken, or you can make a motion, putting, giving the manager discretion to determine an ID policy. Or, if you want to draft an ordinance with a policy, that's up to you.
Motion to put the burden on the manager's shoulders.
Second, Scott.
The ID, that, all of the ID, the picture IDs that we have currently are, are very adequate in my mind. I don't need anything further. If anyone were to ask me for anything further, then I would just merely show my driver's license or my State of Illinois, State of Illinois ID.
Just, just kind of pull the board, if it's decided by the manager to go with the folding wallet type that the chief just showed, I think that should be at the board members' expense. I don't think, would everybody agree with that?
Yeah, 'cause I don't think we need anything other than the card tossed in a wallet.
I mean, you know.
Okay, so it'll be removed from the agenda?
Actually, we have a motion in a second to put it in the hands of the village manager to this.
Okay.
I think that would be the capable hands.
We have a vote in it.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clubenow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Club, Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clubenero.
Something new.
Next item, hiring freeze. Board to consider motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze for the sole purpose of hiring a full-time police officer filling a vacancy in this position.
Since I used my allotted time on the previous, so that thing reminded.
Talk fast.
This is to evacuate, so we had an officer leave the department, and this is a budgeted position, it would put us back to the 38 position, 38 sworn officers' position that was authorized in the last budget. We need this permission now, so the Fire and Police Commission has some steps that they need to take, and so they know that they have the board's approval before they spend more time in doing, doing this.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion?
None.
Go call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clubenow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Next item, Hidden View Drive Reconstruction Project. Board to consider an ordinance awarding the construction contract to Chicagoland Paving Contractors for the Hidden View Drive Reconstruction Process, Project. Steve May, our Public Works Director.
Mayor, the, this is the last phase of the actual reconstruction of Hidden View Drive. You're familiar with the fact, the somewhat unconventional approach, we did the underground improvements under the previous budget year, and these are the actual roadway improvements that are left, or everything on the surface. The construction contract went out to bid, and those bids were opened last Wednesday. There were six bidders, and the low bidder was Chicagoland Paving Contractors at $337,900, relative to the engineer's estimate of approximately $372,000. So, they were all very, all six bids were good, you know, nice and tight, and the low bidder is requalified. They have not worked for the Village of Westmont before, but they are a big company in the Chicagoland area, well, yeah, I guess that's why it's in their name. And they, and the civil, the civil engineering services, the, the design engineer verified they were prequalified to do the work, and has his recommendation to award the bid to the low, award the contract to the low bidder.
So, just to clarify the procedure, Steve, we are, the board would be approving the bid of Chicagoland Paving as the lowest responsible bidder, and authorizing execution of a contract consistent with the bid and the bid document requirements?
Yes. I guess authorizing staff to enter into the contract, right.
This is an item that has been discussed by this board for a number of years. I've asked the manager to go back and look at the history, when the discussions began, what those discussions have been previously leading up to this evening. And manager Searle, would you give us that information, please?
Sure, sure. There's probably been, approximately, there's been about 10 different meetings in which there's been some discussion in some manner about this particular project or the subdivision. I focused and looked at the original discussion back in 2005, the original subdivision discussion, as well as the subsequent discussion 2006, where the board approved the layout of the, of the pork chop area off of Cass Avenue. What I was telling the mayor about earlier was very clear from the discussion 2005, is that the, the residents down there had made it very clear to the board what their desire was. Their desire was not to have those two streets connected and have the ability for traffic to travel through. That was discussed greatly at the October 13th, 2005 meeting. Mr. Solley was here, and he talked about a petition that was presented to the board that, that expressed that desire on the part of the neighbors. However, the board, in that discussion, it was very clear that they were looking at the longer-term, long-range planning for that area, and the Public Works Director, who was Mr. May, was explaining in pretty great detail at that particular meeting how the different developments in that area had all led to the point where the plan was to connect those two points. And there was, as I said, some pretty extensive discussion on the part of the board members that they felt strongly that those two legs of, you know, 56 Place and Hidden View Drive should be connected. Then, the discussion focused on what can we do to try to mitigate the impact of the traffic. So, there was recognition by that, by the board at that time, and it was trustee Fidesco, I believe, who actually offered up the initial suggestion of putting in the pork chop traffic control device. There was not a decision, per se, made at that particular meeting in October of 2005, but we brought that back to the board in March of 2006. Strangely enough, there wasn't a whole lot of people from that area at that meeting in 2006. I'm not exactly sure why, I'm guessing maybe because of the discussion that occurred back in October, because there were a number of residents here at that particular meeting. And, again, I'm speculating, but maybe they felt that the idea of trying to put some type of traffic control in there was the best, you know, thing that was going to come from that particular discussion. So, that was voted on in March of 2006. So, this project, you know, has a pretty long history, and, and for a variety of reasons that include, you know, the, the economy that we've all been faced with, you know, we're, it's taking this long to get it done. And, you know, our sense from a few weeks ago was that, obviously, the road is not in very good condition down there, and we need to push as quickly ahead as we can in terms of getting the construction done. And that's, you know, the reason that we're bringing these bid awards to you tonight.
Question from board members. This project was, obviously, has been approved by the village. We all received emails, other communications from residents who are still wanting to speak on this particular issue. However, they have had their opportunity, this has been discussed on numerous occasions, and has had the final approval by the village, and it is now up to the board as to whether or not we want to listen to all of the same discussion that we lis- discussion that we listened to at the last meeting of this board.
You know, I, the project is full steam ahead and has been for quite some time. This is not new. I would venture that nothing's going to really change at this point.
I don't think you can hear from the public too much. I'd like to hear what they got to say.
I'd like to hear it, too.
I'm okay with that?
Yeah.
With that, with that being said, we will, we will again open it up for public comment, but we have the requirement on our open forum sheets that you're limited to three minutes for your discussion. And if you exceed that, the clerk will let you know that. And with that being said, please come up one at a time, give us your name and address, and make your comments, please.
Good evening. My name is Stan Land. I'm representing the whole neighborhood in, of, of Hidden View Drive. Thanks, Mayor, for us to spend some time.
What is your address, sir?
My address is 114 Hidden View Drive.
114?
114 Hidden View Drive.
Okay.
As manager mentioned, that in 2006, there was some extensive discussion about, you know, if the project is right or wrong. And we have a petition, I still have a copy of petition almost signed by the whole neighborhood. And I, I, we would like to be, the whole discussion to be transparent, how is this input to be taken into consideration when you approve this? Second is, you know, as board trustees mentioned, that, you know, the, the project is already approved, therefore, there is no, there is no sense for discussion. And we feel a little bit differently, you know, the project itself is discussed, however, how really we pursue this project, how we proceed with the design. And this probably, we can still, if the board can still consider our, our input, you know, as we, as we communicated with mayor and on the board, and also as, as published in newspaper and so forth, we have all the, all the letters and so forth. Again, we appreciate that you, you know, you allow us to say, to say our input. We still have, we really still want to reiterate our concern about the safety of children, the traffic pattern, the necessity of this traffic, and the appearance of the neighborhood, and the way to send taxpayers money. It's still our opinion, although it can be, you know, a different opinion from the board. And so if the board will proceed with a project approved, then we would like the board to consider our input in the design. And the neighborhood would like to contribute to any extra cost as our, as our part of the nation, to the concern that we have, safety of the children. We really appeal the board to consider our children, please, to consider our years to be living there, with the mind, with the vision that the street is, is, is what a street is that we purchase. And we spend our lifetime savings there. And we may spend another, you know, additional, additional money there, additional, our spending, our livelihood there. So please consider our, our appeal. And finally, we just want to thank you so much, and for considering, really, the neighborhood, the neighborhood who are living there for years, and who may live there for the years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if, if my, if my, if my neighbors can share some other moments, share some points, we would, we would really appreciate it if you give us one or two more minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and board members. My name is Yonglin Qian. I live in 123 Hidden View Drive. First of all, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinions. I think in the past, when we had the discussions of this project, unfortunately, I think most of our neighbors did not know this discussion, so we didn't have a chance to, to give what our thoughts are. So here is, I like to share my concerns. Even the, the project has been approved, whether it's right or wrong, but I think the, what's missing here is the, the process, you know, it's like, it's, it's our, what our local residents, you know, our opinions were not listened or not, even we signed the petition, it wasn't, so we, we don't know how the petitions were considered or discussed or reviewed. We didn't have a chance to come back here and hear the decision. So that, I think that, that is what's, what's broken, the, the process. So I, I hope in the future, you know, when we decide what the next phase is for this construction project, we should fix that, the procedure, so our voice can be heard. So I, I just want to say that. And also, like what Mr. Land said, you know, our, our neighbors, you know, we all love this place because it's peaceful, it's quiet, it's, it's a safe heaven for, for children to play because of its data, and it's, there's no traffic going through. But if, if we turn this street into a thorough street, even with some sort of traffic control, and you know that, that the traffic will come, because Cass Avenue, 55th Street are all busy street, and people will try to get through here. And no matter what kind of traffic control we put in, there's still going to be, it's going to be more dangerous for, for everybody living on the street. So I think we would like to propose, maybe if we can't change the construction, but we, maybe we can put some blockage or put some trees in between the 56 Place and Hidden View Drive, so even it's a thorough street, there is really no traffic can go through.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mei Jing. I'm living in 106 Hidden View Drive, Gu Yuni. I'm really glad that we have chance to speak tonight. It is, I, we've been living on this street, it's almost 13 years. It's been very quiet neighborhood, and we do understand it's been, this progress, I mean, this construction is trying to improve this, the, the community and this, and this street. Our, the reason we keep coming back here, try to convince everybody, see if there's any way we can, you know, keep this two, two side of the street on the connector, is just because we love here so much. We'd like to have this beautiful community, beautiful street here. And I think any project, any, I mean, construction is, the purpose is make this community better for everybody live here. And our resident live on this street, it's really strongly feel it's better this way. I mean, it's, and that in street whatsoever, we're not against any, I mean, improvement, okay? Street whatsoever, you can do whatever. It's, it's good for, for, for this, this street for Westmont. But if we can keep, we, we was talking about this with our neighbors, that's why we say if, the oldest beautiful trees gone, it's already gone there, and we want, we even want to, you know, contribute the tree, just make this place more, you know, still pretty for everybody to live. And that's my point to, you know, come here today to see if anything we can do to just maybe little change this construction. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I, I'm Li Mei Ku. I live in 122 Hidden View. Just like City Manager said on the 2005 meeting, and that's when the word spread, and so everybody knows, so that's why we make the, write that petition. But on 2006, actually, nobody in our street was informed that you are going to make the decision to make that street go through. I remember when I built my house, my neighbor built a house, and they want to do some of the variant there. And then all the neighborhood, each household, receive a letter, say they are going to have a meeting that going to discuss variants for that house. Then that everybody live next to that house, and then know the meeting, so we all come to that meeting. And then the neighborhood, the neighbor present their variants, and we are okay so they can build their house with their variants. But when our street is going to make such a big decision for our street, but for us who live there in that street, we didn't receive a letter at all. So I think that's not fair to us. If we know that meeting on 2006 March, we will come here and to express our concern again. So, so I think that's a, that kind of process, I feel, is a little bit undemocratic, that's what I feel. So I think all the decision you make is really wonderful for our street, and then that's, I know it's going to solve the problem for the fraud thing, for the east, west side of the people there. I think we are not objection to the construction, we just want, want the board consider that make a blockage, a bushes in between these two neighborhood. One is east side, one is the west side, and then so we still have a beautiful view in our Hidden View Drive, so that traffic when I go through, and then maintain this kind of the peace for all the neighborhood, all the neighbor, all the kids, all the people there. So that's what I want to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Zili. I live in 106 Hidden View Drive. I just want to read this, it's a petition signed in year 2006. One word, one sentence said very good, is it would simply serve, if a cut through, okay, it would simply serve to make a year, another cut through pass from those which to avoid traffic line at the intersection of Cass and 55th Street. We not against the construction, what we concern is, Steve, you always talk control traffic, but the, the try, cut through guy is not a regular guy. They want to quick, they want to beat the congestion, so they go to cut through from Cass to here, they always speed. So in the letter sheet, number three, they say the witness, the speed up to 14 miles just back to the 56th Street. There, if we cut through, it's a same situation over there. We always saw police over there catch people over there. So I think you better to reconsider this thing, and also back to year 2006, that's the petition sheet.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the issue, Mayor, if I may, of whether notice was required, by law, notice was not required. It wasn't a zoning hearing, there wasn't a variance, a special use, a rezoning involved. It's just a public works project. Is it a good practice when a reconstruction project affects many neighbors to, to give a courtesy notice? Yes. I think the board's probably happy you're here, but it was not legally required.
Kind of elaborating on all the comments and, and all the, you know, certainly the good points made, I would have to say that there was no lack of input in 2006 because it was the reaction of the people on the, what I'll just call the east half of Hidden View, that all of the traffic restrictions that are built into the plan came to be. Nobody on the west half was interested in all this limited turn, because all it did was restrict, they have free access right now, and now they can't even get to their property without going all the way to Will Matt. So the, the traffic controls or the traffic restrictions put in are very restrictive and are specifically placed into the design to, you know, to make a, a cut through unattractive.
You don't have a drawing of that by any chance, do you?
I did not, I really should have brought that in, but essentially, where Hidden View Drive intersects with Cass Avenue, the only movement that would be allowed is westbound Hidden View Drive can turn right or northbound onto Cass. That is it. You cannot turn left to get out of there, you cannot turn off of Cass onto Hidden View Drive from either direction. So of the four possible movements, only one is allowed. And for that to be attractive to a cut through would mean someone would have to get off Cass at 59th Street, go a half, well, quarter mile down to Will Matt, come all the way up, and then somehow go back to Cass to get back in that line that they were already avoiding. So I can't physically imagine any attractiveness for a cut through. Now, I'm not, not saying the, the concerns aren't, you know, worthy, but this is why the design is what it is. Now, not to, not to speak to the design anymore, just for your consideration, Cass Avenue is a DuPage County highway, and the extensive permit process that goes through with that intersection was very involved in time consuming. So if there was to be a consideration for a change today, that process would have to start over, and it would pretty much ensure that that doesn't get built this year. If you put a, let's just say, a, you know, a blockage or barricade, or blocked at mid-block like, you know, was suggested, or trees, so that the two street, the two halves of the street no longer are connected, then nobody on the west half of Hidden View has a way to get to their property, because they cannot come in from Cass Avenue. The only way they have to access their property is from Will Matt. And, and lastly, you know, and again, with all these concerns in there, it is, it's one thing proceeding now with the design as it is, there's nothing to stop us from continuing, you know, to monitor it. We can easily measure how much traffic's on that road. The concern is the amount of traffic. I don't believe that there's, you know, potential for a problem there, but we can measure it, you know, perpetually, you know, into the future, and actually see how traffic might be changing. And any of the proposed adjustments could be made, or you could start over with the application process on Cass Avenue. Actually, to block it off at Cass Avenue would be very, would probably be very easy, but to open it back up would be a very long, time-consuming process with a DuPage, you know, division of transportation. So, you know, with that, I just leave that, you know, with you for your, you know, for your decision tonight, but actually, that's all I had to add.
So you're actually saying that at this point in time, even with the way it is right now, it could actually be dead end at 55th Street on the west end?
No, I guess I was saying is if you were going to consider that, firstly, the, the dead end right now off of Will Matt is already longer than our code permits. First of all, if it's a cul-de-sac, it needs a way for a vehicle to turn around in the other end. So it is very atypical as it exists today. Once connected, that one, one block, Will Matt, you know, is a quarter mile long, it's, it's not even laid out in a, in a normal manner. So if you wanted to prohibit 100% of the access in all directions at Cass Avenue, you would have to figure a way to, you know, put a bulb in at the end, and even then, I'm not so sure, you know, I'm not going to speak for the fire chief, but, you know, it's, it's a very unusual, very, very long dead end.
There was quite a bit of discussion about that back in 2005.
I would say our only worst examples would probably be like the James Robinson and 50 57th Street in there, but those are all designed, they have right away at the end, there's a way that they can all be connected, we just, you know, haven't done it yet.
One of the residents asked a question about, you know, what type of consideration was given to the petitions, and I would just concur with what the Public Works Director said, that really, this design is that consideration.
Right.
And that really grew out of that petition being submitted to the board, so that's exactly what you hear when you listen to those meetings back then.
Any other comments from board members? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emery.
Another discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clebina.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming in. Next item on our agenda, finance ordinance number seven.
We have before us on this first day of August 2011, finance ordinance in the amount of $683,130.16.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Discussion?
I just have a couple of questions between last finance and this one here. We have been there again, we're getting really tagged for a lot of money for boarding dogs in euthanasia.
I knew you were going to say that, I thought this...
And it's sickening, I mean, last one, it was a dog, now we've got boarding a cat and some kind of medical fees for these animals. We're starting to run up, you know, $2,000, I think last time it was $1,000. Is there any way we could check into one of the Humane Societies and see if they would not take our strays and not have to go through a veterinary service, or find one that may volunteer their services until a Humane Society could take them? This is costing our...
We can check. The problem, I think, is the Humane Societies that are out there, they have limited capacity, and, you know, they will take the strays that are, come through the county or through other agencies when there are openings, but I, I mean, we can certainly check, but I think the answer's going to be, the system is what it is right now, and it's over capacity. And, you know, we talked about this a few weeks ago, urge people to adopt when you can. There's a lot of animals out there that could really use homes, and unfortunately, that's the best answer we have at this point.
How about DuPage County's animal control?
Well, they, they're part of the system...
They're the one to euthanize. They charge us. They charge him to euthanize.
So if we have something, we have them come out?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of taking them to a veterinary?
They go first to...
Hospital.
...the process. I know they end up...
The animal control only come out if the police authorize it, and they will charge us. They'll not only charge us for coming out, they'll enable charges for the storage and they'll charge us for the euthanization. One of the, I think, cases which you'll see in the purchase order there involved a death investigation where we couldn't leave the animal there, and that incurred us a cost. We're trying to contact the estate of that person to see if they will reimburse the village, and we're working that way. That was one of the titles. We also have our CSO, Rose Ann Terry, who worked for the Anti-Cruelty Society, looking to see if there's any other options other than the Downers Grove Animal Hospital we're currently using. When I saw this last purchase order, yes, it was sizable, however, it was the circumstances we had to deal with, we just couldn't leave the animal there, otherwise we're guilty of the animal cruelty. But we are looking, we're having Rose Ann try to see if there's any other options that we could look into, there's other cost savings we can achieve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Any further comments? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clebina.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Purchase orders.
Motion to approve is a block for $41,500. I'd also like to point out that $20,100 was for hired tree experts for storm damage to remove branches and debris.
Second, Emery.
Discussion on purchase orders. There are no discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Clebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Do you not have a request before us this evening for an executive session? And with that being said, unless there's any further comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Emery.
Second, Seneca.
Roll call on the adjournment.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clebina.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Thank you. This meeting stands adjourned.
Not bad at all.